Good evening. And welcome to the South Brunswick Board of Education Candidate Forum. I'm Sharon Steinhorn, your League of Women Voters moderator for this evening. As per League policy, I as moderator do not live within this voting district. And I didn't think I was going to get here with the traffic. I'm not used to driving in traffic at this hour as a retired person. Let me first remind you that the League is a nonpartisan political nonprofit that works to empower voters and defend democracy. We were founded over 103 years ago. We make democracy work by protecting voting rights and encouraging robust participation in elections. The League of Women Voters never supports or opposes candidates or political parties. We're here tonight for you, the voters, to get to know the candidates and make your own informed decisions when you cast your ballots. And another way to learn about candidates is to visit vote411.org, which is the League of Women Voters' online guide. If any candidates tonight have not yet participated, it is not too late to post anything you want on the site. And this forum is being streamed live via cable over the township, public, educational, and government channel, Channel 28 on Comcast and Channel 36 on Verizon FiOS. It is also being recorded and will be available for viewing on the League of Women Voters' website, which is lvwprinceton.org, and via the following link to the Viking Television Network. And it is youtube.com/sbhsvtn. And if you need that information, I can provide that afterwards. So tonight, we're here to meet the candidates for South Brunswick Board of Ed. The candidates have agreed to the following format. I will pose each question, and the opening statements are only 45 seconds. We're going to move quickly. But then I will pose each question, and the candidate responses will be limited to 60 minutes with no rebuttals. And of course, any candidate may choose to pass. And for closing statements, each candidate will have two minutes, which should give them a chance to wrap up or pick up anything that they forgot to mention. We have a timekeeper up here, Maria, and she will hold up a yellow card. Please show it to them. When there are 30 seconds left, and when there's time to stop, the red card goes up. And it's time to finish your sentence. I won't cut you off abruptly. Finish your thought, but don't keep going on. Questions that I will be asking have been submitted ahead of time by you, the residents, because we have, well, we did have more candidates before I arrived here, but now we have four candidates. And actually, I'm going to change this, and since there are only four, if you need to have a rebuttal, you can have a 30-second rebuttal. And all questions, as well as any candidate's remarks, must follow League policy of being concerned with the issues, not personalities. No abusive, personal, or irrelevant questions or remarks will be allowed. We are here for information. And Deborah, did anybody submit questions as they came in? Okay, then we're good. And given our timeframe, we expect, well, we may have 10 or 12 questions tonight. That means that we will not get to every question that was submitted, but we will seek to cover as many critical topics as possible. And so let's meet the candidates. There are altogether nine candidates running for three open positions for three-year terms. We're happy to have four of the candidates here. And with us, in alphabetical order, is Bilal Youssef Ahmed. You can do that for the introductions, and after that, no applause until the end. We have Magesh Kamalkanen. And we have Mike Mitchell. And finally, Smitha Raj. The candidates have agreed to offer their openings in alphabetical order of their first names. Mix it up a little. And we plan to end by 8:30, when you might have some time to speak with the candidates informally, but please be aware that we need to vacate this building by 9:00 p.m. So let's get started. Opening statements, beginning with Bilal.
Hello, everybody. My name is Bilal Youssef Ahmed. I've been a resident of this town my entire life. I'm a proud son of South Brunswick School District, and I'm proud this year to be running for the South Brunswick Board of Education. I see that there's a few different issues that are coinciding with this election. Number one, there's a budget crisis that potentially will put us $13 million in the hole. There's a question of integrity and honesty, and I want to be a candidate that speaks to those issues, speaks to those concerns from South Brunswick, and is able to address them. Three main planks: I want to fund our schools, I want to protect our students, and I want to unite our town. And over the course of tonight, I hope to engage in a great dialogue and tell you exactly how I plan to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold your applause. You'll have plenty of time at the end. Otherwise, we're just going to use up a lot of their time for speaking. A second opening statement by Magesh.
Hi, I'm Magesh Kamalkanen. I have lived in South Brunswick for the last 17 years, and I have two kids. My daughter studied from grade two and completed a high school here in 2017, and is currently doing her second-year medicine in NJMS. I have a son who studied entire school system from kindergarten to SPHS High School and is doing his final year Georgia Tech. I did my Bachelor of Engineering and completed my MBA in Finance and System Management. I have been working for the last two decades in the field of implementing finance IT systems in the corporate world, handling projects with 30,000 to 40,000 users across the world. I have extensive experience in handling big projects, resources across many countries, and handling the cost budgeting of the projects. I have created a Facebook group for South Brunswick residents with 3,000-plus members, and have been very actively engaged in supporting our community and our school through the social media.
Thank you. And next, we have Mike Mitchell. Mike?
Hi, everyone. I'm Mike Mitchell, and I'm currently finishing up my third year of my first term as a board member here. And I've been in South Brunswick for almost 20 years, very proud of that. And I'm also a 25-year veteran educator in New Brunswick Public Schools. And I'm very proud to serve, just for that reason, our students and our staff. And I'm asking for your support to continue to keep continuity going on our board, because after a while, when the board keeps turning over and over, it's going to eventually affect our staff, it's going to affect our students. So it's time to have consistency and to continue the honesty, because there is honesty. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And finally, Smitha.
Hi, everybody. I'm Smitha Raj. I have a PhD in economics, and I currently work in the pharmaceutical industry. I have two boys. One is a student in the district, and the other is an expert at wagging his tail and criminally extorting treats. I have been on the board for the past three years, and I have invested a lot of energy and time and commitment towards my responsibilities on the board. I have been a part of facilities, negotiations, curriculum, as well as finance committees. And I have an excellent working relationship with my colleagues on the board. And I'm proud to say that I have always been truthful, factual, honest, and acted with integrity in the best interest of the district. And I'm confident to say that I walk the talk. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have to mention that the fifth candidate who was supposed to be here, we're hoping he got ill this afternoon, I guess, and we're hoping to get a statement. We always allow if somebody cannot come at the last minute, I would read their opening statement. So whenever that comes in, huh? You have it? Oh, it hasn't come in yet. Okay. So at the end, if it comes in, you will hear his opening statement. And I'll just mention that these lovely candidates convinced me that I should just use first names, because it's easier for me. So thank you specifically to Magesh. And so let's start with you, Magesh. The first question, and I'll be skipping around, as I mentioned, this is for all of you, but for Magesh. Why did you decide to run for the South Brunswick Board of Education for the coming three years, and what are your priorities for those three years, if elected?
Yeah. Actually, this is not the first time I'm running for the board. I ran in 2018, and fortunately or unfortunately, I lost by 384 votes. And my focus is excellence and transparency and empowerment. These are the main factors based on which I'm going to run. Excellence is focus on our students and our school district and make them a better school district. Currently, I see our school ranking has come down. There are differences of opinion, but based on certain sites, our ranking has come down from 75 to 105. So I feel that we need to work on that and improve the excellence of the school district. I came to the school district because it was a blue-ribbon school district at that point of time. I still want to maintain that, although my kids are out of the school, because that is beneficial for all of us in terms of our property values and things like that. And transparency. Transparency is one area where I see there is a lot of gaps.
Okay. Thank you. Same question, Mike. Same question. You want me to repeat it?
Yes, read it again, please.
Sure. Why did you decide to run for the South Brunswick Board of Education for the coming three years, and what are your priorities for those three years of re-election?
Okay, I decided to run for reelection this year because I felt that three years is not enough to get work done, and that we, as a board together, we're progressing towards continuing to build and protect our students, to protect our budget, which is definitely in jeopardy, I agree with Magesh, is definitely in jeopardy right now. But we have an excellent staff who are, they're working, and they're working very hard to sustain all the programs that we have, because that's the most important thing right now, is to focus on keeping those programs in play. So I really want to make a difference. I really believe I have made a difference in several capacities, supporting the programs, various programs at various schools, my liaison schools, as well as other schools in the district when asked to show up. So reliability, okay, thank you.
Okay. You can always finish a sentence.
No, that's okay.
Okay. And Smitha, the same question.
So the thing is, I have always volunteered for various causes throughout my adult life, and I guess I have an innate longing to be a part of something larger than myself. So when I had a child, and my child started school, and, you know, education being close to my heart, Board of Ed sounded like a good place to volunteer, and that is how I ended up here. And my priorities will be, obviously, having been on the board for the past three years, I have seen the budgetary challenge, the state aid issue that we have. So my priorities will be to first advocate, you know, support the advocacy committee that is formed recently in order to help the district with, you know, with the budgetary challenge and take the fight to Trenton, actually. And I would want to do that. And my other priorities will be to make sure that, you know, we form policies to support good quality, oh, sorry, quality academics and safety, mental health, and extracurriculars. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Bilal.
So I can actually pinpoint a specific day that I kind of decided to take the leap that I would run, and that was the late May, when Superintendent Feder gave us the budget presentation. And I thought, okay, this is in an auditorium that I went to. I'm a graduate of South Brunswick High School. I graduated here in 2018. And I realized that this township, which had given me an education, was at risk. And that's when I started deciding that I wanted to run. In terms of priorities, like, you know, other candidates have mentioned, the budget has to be at the top. While a lot of focus is on, you know, where we can get additional money, I also want to put, you know, some lines in the sand about where we can't cut money from. For instance, mental health resources, like the Bridge Center. I've seen in person during my time at Rutgers that students that are mentally healthy are going to be able to perform properly, and to the point about the school rankings, that will have a direct impact on the community. Besides that, you know, talking about my experience at Rutgers, I was involved in helping students there. So what we were able to do was during COVID, use club money, you know, for shutdown clubs that weren't using it, and give out $200,000 in aid. That's dollars that were helping students, and I want to continue to have that impact on South Brunswick School District.
Thank you. And for the second question, we'll start with Bilal and go the other way. And since you mentioned budget, we know that your school district budget has experienced a major loss of aid from the state. If elected, how will you proceed? What, for instance, what components of the school budget should be protected and perhaps increased, and what components do you think could be adjusted? Please explain your answers and your strategy to accomplish this.
100%. So I think the very first thing that we have to do is reestablish or at least maintain those relationships that we have at the state level. A lot of the budget crisis that we're facing is due to the S2 funding model, whether it's due to, you know, additional temporary funding aid on a one-year basis, you know, stabilization aid, or my preferred package, lobbying these assemblymen in order to get a fundamental change in S2. I think those first couple months, you know, January, February, March, is going to be talking with, you know, Senator Zwicker, Senator Gopaul, Fryman, all these people that will be able to be our advocates on behalf of the budget. In terms of things that I would refuse to cut, I think my line in the sand, once again, is resources that might have a mental or physical impact on students. So that's, you know, the Bridge Center, that student resource officers, you know, protecting us, that student assistance counselors, people that are able to work with the students on a daily basis and give them the assistance that they need. In terms of where I'd be able to cut, I reviewed the budget earlier, and there are certain line items that are kind of opaque. You know, I have down in my notes here, there's one that just says, you know, general capital positions or unrestricted miscellaneous revenues. Even though we might be able to pull some from us, a lot of this is going to come down to the state.
Okay. Thank you. Same question. Let's go to Magesh.
Yeah, okay. So our school budget is around $160 million. And based on the S2 funding formula, I think we lost $4 million this year, and later after some pushing by Zwicker, Senator, and with the state, we got back $2.6 million, and there was a shortfall for $1.4 million. So the best way, to me, is to look at areas where we can cut without impacting the student. The first focus, to me, should always be the safety and well-being of the student. For example, I did one NJSP workshop on Board of Education member, and they said, who should you fight for or who should you represent as a board member? People said different, different answers, teachers, parents, and the answer was students, because they're the people who cannot talk for themselves. So we have to make sure that their programs are not impacted at any cost. We can look at other areas, admin costs, we can try to see, and wellness center. We have a wellness center which costs $15 million over five years. We need to look at that to see whether we can reduce some on that front. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes. I agree, we really need to work on our situation with the S2 funding. And I mean, the good news, those of you who are tuning into the last board meeting, what's proposed and has already been in the works for us to apply early for the stabilization aid that we're going to need already. So we're already working on this. It's not, we're going to wait until January, we're going to wait till March. We're working on it now. And because we're very concerned, we don't want to lose programs. We think all the programs that we have in place for our students are important, not one is bigger than the other, and that's important to remember. So we're going to give you, we're going to work our best, our administration's going to work their best, the staff, they're going to work their best to make sure that this works out for South Brunswick, because it's about South Brunswick, and it's about our kids.
Okay. Smitha? Can you repeat the question? Sure. We know that the school district budget has experienced a major loss of aid from the state. If elected, how will you proceed? For instance, what components of the school budget should be protected and perhaps increased, and what components do you think might be adjusted? Please explain your answer and your strategy to accomplish this.
So the way to prioritize, I would rely on the community budget committee that was formed last year. It had members drawn from the whole community, so I would definitely use that to prioritize, use their conclusions to prioritize, to solidify my priority. They suggested that we protect academics and safety and mental health and extracurriculars. So I would go by that priority. Those will be non-negotiables. How can we make sure, you know, to get more money out of Trenton is, again, as I said, be a part of the advocacy committee and take it to Trenton, essentially, because they control the purse strings and they have the variables, which probably will not be changed in the short run, but there is some way for, there should be some way for us to fight at Trenton.
Thank you. And while we're here, we'll start with you for the next question. For Smitha. If elected for the coming term, will you be able to work closely with your colleagues despite the animosity that is frequently seen or felt among school board candidates, members, and the superintendent? Do you expect to be able to help reduce this animosity over time?
The thing is, if we spend a lot of time on social media, it feels like, you know, there's a lot of animosity, there is a lot of divisiveness, but when we meet in person, things are different. We tend to get along with each other, and I have excellent working relationship with my colleagues on the board and also the administration. I also have excellent relationship with families around the town. And I have always been a team player, so I don't see any problem there. But yeah, we have to get off social media, get off social media and, oh, sorry.
If you have something else to add, right?
Okay. So the thing is, we have to get out of the social media world.
Okay. I get it. Mike, want to take that one?
Yeah, why not? Say the question again one more time. I think the nerves are kicking in a little bit.
I got it. No, no problem. If elected for the coming term, will you be able to work closely with your colleagues despite the animosity that is frequently seen or felt among school board candidates, members, and the superintendent? Do you expect to be able to help reduce this animosity over time?
Absolutely. So if reelected, if I get reelected and my two colleagues don't get reelected, and obviously, it's very important to try to develop those relationships with those newer members and as well as, you know, emphasizing and growing what's already been going on with your current fellow board members. And so I think that's important. I think that for our district, for the children's sake, it has to be the bottom line, that we work towards them. Anything we do, it can't be about my own personal beliefs or Smitha's or Magesh's. We have to put them first, put them ahead of us, and work towards that end, if nothing else. And that has to be at the bottom line for all of our decision-making. It can't be about politics. And I know politics has shifted its way into education, but we need to remember that, that our kids are important and to always put them first.
There'll be a question about that, fear not. Magesh, same question about the animosity and helping to reduce that.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, personally, I have differences of opinion with the current, most of the board members, but that doesn't mean that, like, I'm against them. So once I get into the board, objective is to try to convince them that we need to focus more on the safety and well-being of the student. That is more important than anything else. There could be a budget cut, but we have to make sure that a child is not impacted. Currently, we have a busing issue where around 250 kids are impacted. They have lost bus service. So we are working with them to get it resolved, and I see most of the board members have approved that, for whatever reason. But if I was in the board, it will give me an opportunity to talk to them and explain to them why we should not do that and maybe look at other options. Maybe I have been in the finance for the last 25 years. I can look at the budget and see whether there could be some areas where we could reduce the cost and save this 250K. It's an amount of 250K. It's not a big, huge amount, which we could always get it. Oh, sorry. I was looking at you.
Yeah. I'll just remind you that I don't vote in this district. All these people do. So you're being recorded, and you can speak to, these are your constituents.
Yes, I'm sorry.
These are the people who you want to vote for. Let's go on. Same question, Bilal. Do you need it repeated, or you?
No, I think I'm good.
Good, okay.
In terms of working with colleagues after an election, right, I always think it's important to kind of take a step back and remember the fact that we're still in October. There's still a month left until the election. So I think the first thing that we can do is make sure that, like, on social media, when we're talking with people in person, we're lowering the rhetoric, and we're understanding that all of the candidates, you know, hopefully have the students' best interests at heart. So before we even get sworn in in January, I would want to say that right now, and what I'm hoping to do, is running a positive campaign about the issues, about the students, which, once again, I would encourage all candidates to do. In terms of working with the colleagues after the election, I'm in the interesting position where I'm the only one that's running completely solo. So no matter what, I'm going to be working with at least two people that I was previously running against. And towards that end, you know, right now, I'm committing myself to having a completely positive attitude, you know, no mudslinging throughout this election. And then when it gets time to being sworn in, you know, just focusing on the students, you know, there's issues that we've all pointed out, there's going to be the budget, there's going to be discussions about things like Policy 5756 potentially. So rather than, you know, focusing on what looks best personally, I think we should just, you know, focus on receiving comments and addressing them from the public and for the students.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to the next question, and we'll start with Mike. But if I may ask, Bilal, could you start one of those waters and pass it down, because I left mine in the car?
Oh, yeah, you bet.
I'd love to. Thank you.
You bet.
I appreciate it. Okay, Mike, next question, starting with you. What do you recommend to be done to attract and retain staff and teachers? And how do you now, or what would you do if elected, support, elected again, I guess, support South Brunswick teachers?
Well, that starts with negotiations. You have to look at other districts, and when we're negotiating with our staff, recognize that we have to offer competitive salaries and benefits. So that's really where it starts, is, and I can say that, especially since I'm a 25-year veteran myself in education, that certainly, if I can go somewhere else and be closer to home, which is what's happening now, I'm looking at salary, I'm looking at benefits, I'm looking at the makeup of the district, the logistics, the demography, I guess I'm trying to say. So that's where it starts, because you could say whatever you want to say, but teachers, they're going to come and they're going to stay if they're happy, if they're making, you know, money to live and live the way they want to live. And that's, you know, they're here for the kids first, especially our teachers. I'm very proud of that. So they're here for the kids first, so, but that's definitely, that plays, you know, a part.
Okay. Smitha?
Yeah. So, well, I would say compensation, benefits, and work environment. South Brunswick is great on all the three counts. The work environment is very nurturing, and students, sorry, teachers will have a, you know, that is the thing that we see, most teachers are inspired to do more. So I'm sure most teachers would want to work in an environment like that, inspiring and something that gives them that professional fulfillment. And also, the benefits are great, health center especially. So the health center offers same-day appointments and no cost on prescription and no copays. So that's an awesome thing to have.
Okay. Bilal?
Apologies. Could you repeat the question?
Sure. What do you recommend be done to attract and retain staff and teachers? And how would you, if you were elected, support the teachers of this district?
For sure. So in terms of what we can do to attract teachers, you know, not to go on trodden ground already, but things like salaries, benefits, I think those are all important to maintain at their current levels, just to make sure that, you know, teachers feel valued and are heard. I'm not going to go too much deeper into that since it's already been covered. Additionally, I think we should be looking at professional development opportunities for teachers. So if there's any way for a teacher to be able to improve on their own skill set, maybe learn about a topic that they haven't learned about, learn a different perspective, those sort of workshops, if we're able to allow them to attend, if we're able to have people come to South Brunswick to host them, I think those are important as well. And then finally, I think one of the key things that we can do for teachers is making it clear that they're being heard. You know, I'm a firm believer in the idea that a teacher's working conditions are students' learning conditions, right? So when I was at Rutgers, I was part of early negotiations that were happening between, you know, the associate professors, the adjuncts, and the leadership under President Holloway. Unfortunately, we weren't able to prevent the strike, but, you know, being engaged in conversations like that, where professors, teachers at South Brunswick feel like they're heard, I think goes a long way in maintaining those relationships and making sure that they're happy.
Okay, thank you. And Magesh?
Yeah. The first thing is obviously a good pay package and benefits. I'm sure we all like to have a very good pay package and benefits. So maybe we should benchmark with some of the best school districts around us. Say, for example, West Windsor is in the top 10 school district. We could see that, what is the pay packages? We can go this information and compare and make sure that our teachers information and compare and make sure that our teachers are in line with those kind of school districts. If they're in the top 10, why we are in the top 100? We should be somewhere in the top 20, 30 at least. We're not moving towards that. So we need a good teachers. And even then, they might have some issues, so we should have a nice process to handle their issues. And if at all a staff leaves, do an exit interview and find out for what reason that staff has left, and try to correct those issues. And on top of that, give them a wonderful working environment so that they don't have much grievances. And training opportunities should be given so that they can improve their skills in the school. Thank you.
Okay. Next question. Oh, you want to rebuttal?
Yeah, if you want to call it that.
You may have 30 seconds.
Just a clarification. A couple weeks ago, I received an email from, through Patch, and it revealed statistics in our state, okay? South Brunswick moved up two spots from number 13 to number 11 in the state. And we're still number one in the county, just so you know, for the record.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Plodding yourselves. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. So different, there are different organizations which rank differently. Like, US News ranked us around 75, whereas West Spencer is...
That's national.
No, okay, national. But West Spencer is around the top 15, okay? And School Digger is another website which does that, where we have moved from 75 to 105. Each site has got their own ways of ranking. So in some cases, we are falling. That is the reason it's moved down from 75 to 105.
Okay. There's no conversation between you, but you certainly can, yeah, but you can certainly comment. Go ahead.
So, yeah, I would just like to add that, you know, the way rankings are calculated by all these assorted websites, it's very opaque and not consistent across the board. So the other things that, other metrics that can be, you know, that is more suitable to see is that, are metrics like graduation rates, and extracurriculars, achievements in extracurricular at the state level, regionals, and things like that, which are more concrete.
Okay, thank you. Ready to go to the next question? We'll start with Magash. Actually, let's go right to the hot-button issue, and just take your minute to comment on the busing concerns. And let's get that
My favorite topic.
Out and over with. Magash?
Okay. Yeah, this busing issue has been going on for the last three months, we all know. We have come, board meeting after board meeting, parents have, many parents have spoken. But it looks like a one-way conversation, because basically, the comments section is like, they hear those comments, and then they forget it. There is no response back. That needs to be improved. There should be a way where these comments are tracked. They should be registered somewhere, and it should be responded to, at least in the next board meeting. So that is not happening. And the main reason we lost the busing is, the state reduced by 1.4 million, and school wanted to save 400K on that by reducing the busing. What they could have explored is a subscription busing, which many of the school districts have done. Edison has done, Freehold has got subscription busing. You can give at $400, $500. The parents are willing to pay that amount. And with that, you will get 150K. So balance shortfall is only a 250K shortfall, which is not a huge amount. We could find someplace to get that amount. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, yes. Okay, you'll all have your turn, but go ahead.
So the number of students that I've lost courtesy busing stands at 220. And the other thing is, subscription busing for different districts work differently. The size of the district, the size of South Brunswick cannot be expected to offer the subscription busing service, like, say, a smaller district with a different, you know, shorter routes. So it's not one-size-fits-all. That's, it depends on the district. And it is also something that's not off the table.
Bilal, Bilal?
Final.
It's just my rebuttal, by the way. I'm sorry.
Well, okay, let's go to Bilal, though.
Sure.
Same question.
So, there's a previous mention that, you know, parents would be willing and happy to pay $400, $500 for subscription busing. Now, like, look, we're in tough economic times, right? I don't think that we should be forcing student, parents, some of whom are going to be, you know, working early nights, you know, early days and long nights, right, to suddenly pay out of their pocket this extra $450 for something that has been previously provided for them. Yes, I agree 100% that it was, you know, a necessary decision to take some initial budget cuts for the buses, right? I don't think it should continue, though, right? I don't think students outside of that 2.2, 2.5-mile radius should be expected to be walking to school or provided their own transportation. I think that if there are any additional budget cuts that are necessary, there should be some sort of public discussion. Now, the point that was mentioned about transparency, I believe there has been transparency on this issue. I think that Superintendent Feder has gone out of his way to explain a tough decision, but a necessary decision. And towards that end, if we're talking about transparency, my plan would be a rollover agenda. You know, if a question is asked during public sector, what we would have is referred to the general board for a response by the next meeting, or have referred for a subcommittee, so it would be additionally examined.
Okay. Mike, and then we'll come back to you.
I'll pass.
Okay.
So, South Brunswick is a policy board, South Brunswick Board of Ed is a policy board, and we have policies around transportation. And what has happened right now is the operations, transportation operation is now aligned to the policy that we have at the district. And the other thing is, the district follows Robert rules, Robert's rules. So commenting is a part, the format of commenting, it is based on Robert's rule. Coming back to the courtesy busing issue, the, I'm getting distracted. So, coming back to the courtesy busing surveys, right now, of course, after the alignment towards the, to the policy, many families have lost busing. Subscription busing, as I said, is not off the table. But the most important thing is for the district to stick to, form a rule, and stick to, form a policy, and stick to the policy. Also, the district transports roughly 6,000 kids, and there are 1,000 kids who already walk to schools. And whenever we, whenever we have a policy, whenever we are operating on, based out of a policy, there can't be a rule for 1,000 kids and 1,000 kids who are already walking. And then we have a separate rule for an exception, a small group of exceptions.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, there's, there's no comments. I thought I heard something from the audience. It's not your turn. It's these people's turn to speak. You can speak to them afterwards. I brought my gavel. I hope I don't have to use it.
I have a rebuttal on that.
You have, okay, you have...
See, basically, what they did in the subscription, the busing here is...
Talk to them.
Yeah, sorry. Basically, what they did is, they cut the busing routes first. They didn't do the safety study. And when the parents came and asked, they started doing the safety study, which is not the right way. And the people who should have asked for the safety study is not Scott Feder, it is the board members. They should have questioned when the busing cut was happening, did we do a safety study? Because later, when they realized, they looked at those routes, the parents, I went to Summerfield Route, and I saw it was going through a place which has got overhead lines, and it was protected by PSEG. And then when the parents pointed it out, they reversed that division, and the busing has been provided to Summerfield. So we need to do the proper way. That board is responsible for that.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
So, the thing is, the district did the study that was required to study, that was required to come to the conclusion. And the parents, a bunch of parents, asked for a safety study to be, they had some safety concerns, and the district did the right thing, and hired outside experts to avoid any bias, and spent a lot of money on the study. And curiously, and it very importantly, the conclusion the outside expert came to is the same as the district's conclusion.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the next question. If you have something else about this, you can add it on. But this is a real, a quickie question. And after I ask it, I'll take whoever wants to answer it first, because it may take you a minute to figure it out. How many South Brunswick school board meetings have you attended in the past year? Anybody who has an answer, I'll...
I have attended all meetings, except for one summer, one meeting during my summer break and the times that I was sick. So I have been very good with my attendance.
Okay, just asking. Somebody wanted to know.
I have attended maybe around eight to nine meetings
Okay.
In the last one year.
Yeah, so I'd say about seven of them, most of them being virtual. And then I've also come to public comment during one of the budget meetings as well.
Okay. Mike?
I've been at every meeting.
Okay, thank you. That was quick. We did need a timer for that one. All right, moving along, and this time, we will start with, we'll start with Mike, okay? Parental rights can conflict with other concerns regarding a range of controversial topics such as gender issues and book banning. What factors would influence how you vote as a school board member on one or more of such issues?
Well, I believe the parent is the caretaker, so the parent has a right to know what their child is into, what their child does. Where I would draw the line is, if there's a risk of that child being harmed, then the necessary steps should be taken to protect that child, that they're not harmed. Because we're here, again, once again, and as has been said, the child, the children's safety is the most important thing. So I, that's pretty much all I'm going to say about that.
Okay.
It's pretty simple.
Bilal?
Yeah. So, as per my current understanding of both, you know, regulation in place at the state and South Brunswick's policy, this is not a situation in which students are being forced to conform to any particular gender identity. When it comes to parents' rights, some people have said that, you know, the school is, for some reason, hiding these gender identities from the parents. I don't believe that's happening at all. I think at the end of the day, this is about balancing two particular relationships, right? It's the key relationship of that parent and the child, making sure that the parent is aware of what the child is doing at school. At the same time, there's also another question, another relationship that we should be considering. And that is, why is this child, you know, whoever they might be, feeling that they can, you know, identify as one way at the school, feel more comfortable at the school, and identify it a different way at home? Now, what I would encourage, you know, the administration to do, and what I would encourage us to do in terms of developing policy, is making sure that we have mechanisms to encourage these familial dialogues. So making sure that we're bringing in parents, bringing in students at a point when the student feels comfortable, to make sure that they both understand each other, and that it's not the student having to hide a particular part of their identity from their parents.
Okay. Smitha?
So, as a parent, I would want to know, you know, things going on in my child's life so that I can support my child to the best possible extent. But there are two issues that you refer to. The first issue is the trans issue. The guidelines from the state is different. It's actually a slippery slope. What was told to the districts earlier was that it's a policy that is coming from the state. But now, there is some confusion regarding whether it is a policy that the districts need to conform to, or whether it is sort of a guideline. But yeah, it is all about, it is all about sticking to the policy and not attracting penalties to the district. I don't think we are in a situation to pay penalties right now. And about the book bans, I don't think parents are involved in, parents' involvement in book bans, it doesn't make sense to me. It's curation. School districts have librarians and experts to curate the collection of books. So obviously, we don't want to stock books that are not in the best interest of our children. That's that.
Okay. And Magash?
The child has the right to choose his or her gender, but the parent should not be kept in the dark. So the parents are the caretakers for the child. So that information has to be passed on to the parents. The school should not or cannot hide that information to the parent. And if a parent is forcing a child, then that becomes a law and order issue, or a school can intervene in that case. But other than that, the parent should be updated about the status of the child. And here, I hear a lot of, I mean, in South Brunswick, I heard a few cases where they say that the school is hiding that. So unfortunately, sitting from outside, I don't know the truth. Maybe if I'm sitting in the board member, I'll have all the right to question the school superintendent and try to get the necessary information for that. But sitting from outside, I cannot judge whether they're really hiding or it is people just talking about it. That's it.
Okay. Bilal?
Yeah, just a...
Rebuttal, or go ahead?
Just a quick rebuttal. So, I generally agree with the idea that the parent should have the right to know, right? At the end of the day, they're the parent, right? I think the important part, and where we need to flesh out the specifics, is the process by which that happens. If this is just a thing where, you know, a teacher hears that a student is using a different pronoun, they tell the principal, tells the superintendent, and then suddenly, you know, the parent gets a phone call, that deprives the parent and the student of being able to have, you know, a gentle, warm conversation, right? It's suddenly something that's just forced on them. So what I would recommend is keeping the policy as it's generally in place, and then, as a school district, trying to figure out the best way to make sure that if these discussions are going to be held, we can do it in a way where both the parent and the student are, you know, informed of it, and can come together in a dialogue, and not come together as, you know, two people viewing the issue from diametric points of view.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the next question, and we'll start with Bilal, since we were there. Give some examples of curriculum issues that you think the school board should be addressing or not addressing. What curriculum issues stand out?
So I've done a review of the curriculum for South Brunswick, for the middle school, the high school, and the elementary school. I think it's interesting that we have to go out of our way at certain points to note out things. Like, for instance, when you look at the curriculum for the middle school social studies, right, they have to go out of their way to say, you know, 1619 project is not being discussed, that CRT isn't being discussed, right? I think that, as has occurred so far, the curriculum has been pretty well fleshed out. I don't think there's any, like, notable things that I would go against. The only thing that I would say is, there could be an improvement in the 21st century courses that students take. Things like, you know, encouraging them to do computer science, or technical development, or IT. Those are growing fields, and from what we've been seeing, those are going to be paying huge dividends. So I think if we're encouraging students to get interested in those now, you know, ninth grade, 10th grade, right, before they're making decisions for college, it can do a lot in terms of their long-term professional development, you know, giving them the idea about what they might want to go into, you know, for a career.
Okay. Mike, you want to take that one?
Sure, I'll go for it. The curriculum, curriculum instruction has been at the forefront. We have an excellent board-level committee that addresses that specifically curriculum. And they've made great strides over the last several years, not even beyond our years on the board of improving the curriculum. And I really don't see where there's a place that we need to just go in and just pick it apart and redo it again. You know, there's an old saying, you know, if it's not broken, why try to fix it? You know, the bad thing, the thing you don't ever want to do is to go in and say, okay, let's just pick this apart, and let's just, you know, you know, just to say we did something. I mean, that's not what it's all about. It's not, that's not what being on the board is about. So that's all I can say on that.
Okay. Magash?
Yeah. This is actually, I don't have in-depth knowledge on what is happening in the curriculum, but what, based on what I heard, but it needs to be validated. What I heard is there are some kind of caste discrimination topics being covered in the curriculum. So frankly, I don't have much information on that. But maybe if I'm in the board, then I have all the right to go into the details of that and find out what it is. And recently, there was a seventh, and I think as of this year, they have merged the seventh and eighth grade together. They have common classes. And I've analyzed that. I think it has got a lot of advantages. Like, when they go into the high school, they have somebody they already know. There are certain good advantages of that. But I heard from some of the students that there is some overlap of classes. Maybe they should explore that and make sure that there are no overlap of classes when they move from the seventh to the eighth grade.
Okay. And, Sisalika?
All curriculum are derived from NJ's learning standards. So the district doesn't have, you know, it's not possible for the district to teach something that is not in the standards. So it is all derived from the NJ learning standards. And there is a process to review the curriculum as and when there is revision to the standards, and it is an ongoing process. So I also, I have been on curriculum committee all these three years, and I chair the committee right now. So we have, we have a very thorough, thorough process to review it. And that is what the committee does, that is one of the things the committee really does. And I need 30 seconds to rebut.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Rebuttal. So, the middle school looping. Right now, seventh and eighth grade students are in the, they are, they are learning social science and social studies and science together. So it is actually, some not new to the district, it's been reintroduced. And the best advantage of looping, the best advantage of combining both of them is looping, that is, they get to stay with the same teacher for two years. So it will help with the social and emotional aspect of, you know, challenges that students have been going in the post-COVID years. And, yeah, I'm stopping.
That's the same thing what I said.
No. Okay, all right, let's move along. We have a couple more before we can get into final.
Be really quick.
Go ahead.
So as in my district where I work at, this district also hires people when curriculum kind of goes out of date, to rewrite the curriculum. So just so the public knows that we're always, you know, we're on it. This district is on it when it comes to making sure the curriculum is up to date and ready for our students.
Okay, thank you. Let's start with, we'll start with Smitha here for the next question. How and to what extent do you think schools should work to address racial issues in society?
Again, school should be a welcome, welcome place for students of all kinds, all races. It should not be, it should not, there should not be any special privileges for anybody, it should not be a problem for anybody. It should be, everybody should be treated, all students should be welcome. And students, school districts have a responsibility to have, to have equity, to bring in equity and accommodate diversity, you know, that is because charity begins at home, everything begins in the school level. So the way society eventually progresses to become what it is starts at school. So school districts have a big responsibility in that direction.
Okay. Mike, go ahead. Sorry. Lost track for a minute.
Unfortunately, in our society, sometimes diversity creates adversity, and it should not be that way. We're all different, and we should be able to take our differences and work together. No matter what your beliefs are, no matter what you look like, no matter how you feel, we should be able to come together and agree, or disagree. It's okay to disagree. But at least you know where each other stands. And I think that's something that we need to continue to do amongst ourselves, because it starts at the top. You know, our administration, our teachers, and other staff members. You know, there's trainings out there for diversity trainings. And so there's, there's resources out there if the need comes up. So I haven't heard anything major around here, so.
Okay.
But it's always, it's always a threat, there's always a threat of that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bilal?
Yeah, so, you know, I really agree with the, what some of the points of the other candidates have made. So I believe that, you know, school can be a great equalizer. People that come from certain disadvantaged backgrounds can use school as a way to kind of break things that might have historically been happening. In terms of what South Brunswick has been doing, I think it has both been, you know, well-involved in this issue of DEI. And also, I think that the way the curriculum has been developed allows students to meaningfully understand this. So if you look at some of the standards that's set up in like the ninth and the 10th grade, that's when they start to understand, or that's when they start to implement within their social studies courses, the ideas that, you know, different backgrounds, different perspectives, different contexts and raisings, impact things like how you view political issues, how you impact history issues. Having actually gone through the school, I've always felt like it was, you know, a good job was done to share those different perspectives. And I think as long as we continue with those standards, you know, South Brunswick students will be well-prepared for, you know, the diverse world that they'll be facing.
And Magesh?
Racial discrimination. To me, racial discrimination and bullying could also be related. The bullying could also be because of racial discrimination. So sometimes, how we classify it, it becomes different. A child could be bullied because of her race, but we may not be able to prove it is because of racial, that is a case of racial discrimination. Recently, I think a year or two back, a child from maybe high school, I don't know the exact grade, but she was bullied a lot, she was bullied in school, and she was working somewhere, she was bullied there also. But it looks like not proper action has been taken. And finally, I think the child committed suicide. And those kind of situations could be avoided. And I was trying to check my data, I did an Oprah of those items. I think I couldn't get a clear detail of how many cases like that are registered in the school. The school should maintain, like how many children complain against bullying, racial discrimination. Those things should be maintained in the school records.
Okay, you have, go ahead, 30 seconds?
Yeah, so towards that point, I think, you know, what you mentioned is, first off, it's an incredible tragedy. My heart goes out to the family of the student that lost their life. In terms of what we can do to prevent it, again, I think it goes to the issue of what can we do to fund student mental health resources and student advisory resources, so counseling, the Bridge Center, even things like, you know, the stress of going into college, so making sure that they have access to, access to the right student assistant counselors. I think those are essential things that we need to look at, and things that we can't at all impugn upon as we look at these, you know, budget adjustments that have to occur over time.
Okay, go ahead.
The kid who went and bullied that child is not doing out of stress. I mean, so that child needs to be handled in a different way. So it could be a mental health issue, possible. So there should be a mechanism to handle and take care of that child who is doing the bullying.
And is that something that is happening in this, I know that didn't happen in this school district, I don't mean to imply that, but is that something that this district needs to improve on, or I'm not sure your point?
Definitely has to improve on. First, there should be records of that, which is missing, I don't think there are sufficient records. Records should be maintained, and proper action should be taken, so that kind of situation never happens in the school district.
Okay, so we moved into bullying a little bit, but go ahead.
Yeah, so the topic was race, I'm sorry.
Well said, racial.
It was racial equity, racial equity, and we ended up at bullying. But the district is very thorough when it comes to documenting HIB as per the, as per the requirement the state has issued. So harassment, intimidation, and bullying is very seriously, it is very seriously taken, no discounts there, and it is documented as per law.
Okay, and Bilal, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, yeah, just to reiterate that, like, what we're doing in terms of HIB is done in line with the best guidance provided by the state. It's also being done, considered at the municipal level, what's, you know, taking community input into it. And I just want to be clear, just to clarify what I believe one of the other candidates was mentioning. I was by no means defending, you know, the bully in that situation. What I'm saying is that, you know, we need to encourage investments into mental health resources to make sure that the terrible tragedy that occurred never happens again.
Okay, we're actually moving into the last question that I have, which time flies when you're having a good time. And the last question, we are going to start with, how about Magesh? You got the last question before you do your closing, and so here it is. And it's kind of a, there are several questions that we've, about this that we've put together, about being a divisive, a divisive community. And it says, for some time, there have been concerns about the board, the district members, that community has lost their trust and faith in decisions taken by the board. So what steps can be taken by the board to regain that integrity? I think I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, this is a very important question. Yeah, if you have seen the last five, six, or seven, eight board meetings, you would have seen that parents come complain on the certain issues, but there has been no response mechanism. So a kind of response mechanism should be built into the system, like board. It is not that a parent comes, a parent comes leaving their work for two hours, sit down here for the entire two hours, to give a speech for three minutes at the end, and nothing is taken note of, and nothing is recorded. You have a system wherein you record the issue. And in the next board meeting, you should come out with an action item, what was done on the issue. So that needs to be improved. Currently, there is no mechanism like that. That was 30 seconds, sorry. You showed the other way, okay, that's fine. So, sorry, I lost my track. So that is one, one area they need to improve a lot. And other thing that I noticed is when a parent, like a busing issue parent comes and talks, there is a group of other residents, I don't know whatever is the reason, they come and don't talk about their issue. Sometimes they attack the other parents who's coming to say an issue. I don't know, that mentality has to change. We are all together, we are one community. If somebody has got an issue, let them speak and let the board take care of it. You don't try to attack them in social media or in the board of education.
I'm going to go to, I'm going to go to Smitha.
Can you please repeat the question again?
Sure. For some time, there have been concerns and issues happening at the board. The district members have lost their trust and faith in any decisions taken by the board. What are steps that the board can take to regain that integrity?
Okay, it's a.
It's a big one.
It's a big one, yeah. So the district has been transparent, very transparent. Any major decision has been, has been reached after extensive consultation with committees, with, you know, with the committees that involve general public. So there was, whenever, when the transportation changes happened, there was an ad hoc committee. And then budget issue, there was an ad hoc committee. And now with the courtesy busing service, there was an interactive session where parents had a chance to ask questions right here, right here north. So there is always, there will always be a section of community that will be, that will feel decent franchise, that is, that feels unheard. But right now, the interaction can't happen during board meetings, regular board meetings, because as per the policy, it happens, the board meeting is run based on Robert's rules. Robert's rule does not allow for interactive, interaction between public and board. What can be, and the way to interact is via emails. And this has been the theme of most of our retreats, that every email that is, that is written to a board member or the administration goes, gets a reply. That that's been the theme of all the retreats in the past three years.
Okay. Wait, wait, let's get everybody, let's get everybody in, and then you can do your two, two-minute closings. Bilal?
So I'm going to quickly begin by addressing the last point that was made in terms of the best way to respond to people that are interacting with members of the Board of Education is through email. If there's an issue where you have 10, 20, 100 parents coming out, it doesn't make sense on a practical basis for you to do one-on-one interactions with each of them. This is something that suddenly requires, you know, more public response. So to that point, once again, to go back to something that I mentioned earlier, I think a rollover agenda is necessary. Now, I was parliamentarian of my student government, so I'm well acquainted with Robert's ritual order. What we can do is just amend the bylaws. What we can do is make it so that way, within a particular agenda, if something is mentioned during public sector, we can group it together if there are questions of a general comment, or if there are general topic. And then we can have at the top of the next agenda, just like a brief response to it. And then if more in-depth decisions are required, then what we can do as a Board of Ed is, you know, going back to what one of the other candidates mentioned, refer that to a committee. But even then, you still need those committee resources to be available. So I think being more transparent in terms of what put online, you know, meeting minutes, the recordings, just general notes about it would go a long way to making people feel included in the decision-making process.
Let's get Mike in as the last speaker on this question, and we'll take a rebuttal if needed.
So repeat the question again, please?
Sure.
Make sure I'm clear.
For some time, there have been concerns, issues happening with the board, district members, and people have lost their trust and faith in any decisions taken by the board. What are steps that can be taken to regain that integrity?
Okay, one of the things I believe that we have as a board began in our three years, and especially this year, is making sure that people understand what the function of the board is. Not everyone knows that, and I think that's what creates that confusion. And maybe, well, it does, it's affecting the trust of the people. They need to know what our function is, what our true function is. We all have what we think the board should do, you know, but what is the true function of the board? And that's handed down from the NGSBA, Jersey School Boards Association. We are under them, we pay dues to them to structure how the board functions. And that's so important to know. I think that if, if we were more educated on that, I think it would clear up some of the confusion that's out there. Really, I think it would.
Okay, thank you.
Education.
You wanted to add something? Go ahead, rebuttal.
Yeah, so right now, the district website has all board meetings, meeting minutes, videos, agendas, everything is online. There has been a big push towards transparency, everything is online. Just got to see, go, check out the website. And about the rollover agenda, yes, if there is an important agenda item that needs to be considered further, we always put it on the old business items, and that's been the case for the, at least for the past two years.
Okay, all right, we get two more rebuttals, and then we're definitely going to start the two minutes. Go ahead, 30 seconds.
So she said that the current board meeting, you can have only a one-way information. Yeah, that's fine, but you track it, record it, and then respond it in the next board meeting, that is one. And when there are like 30, 40 parents coming and saying something, that means there is fundamentally something is wrong in the system, something is broken. So yesterday, I was in a NJ SBA Board of Education workshop where I asked them, and they said there are other options. You call for a town hall meeting, you call for a town hall, bring all the parents, ask them, let them ask, ask the questions. And the board and the superintendent can answer those questions and clarify. So there are other mechanisms by which it can be addressed. And just one last point is the budget, this is the budget from our site.
Can you hold that, you used your 30 seconds, we want to move along. Bilal had 30 seconds for, on this topic.
Point to that, I think the board has been, you know, doing a good job in terms of putting the, you know, nine members of the Board of Education's, you know, those meetings online, you know, the ones that happen on Thursdays. The point is, though, if you have an ad hoc committee that's formed, if you have a subcommittee, if you have a policy committee that's having these discussions, you also need to understand what's happening there. You know, we can't just say, you know, we formed a policy committee, we formed a finance committee, or whatever it might be, and then say it'll be addressed. You know, I think transparency on that end is incredibly necessary. And, you know, making sure that those resources are readily available, I think is incredibly important.
Okay, we're going to move on, we're going to move on. We're going to move on. We got to be out of here at a certain time, save it for your two minutes. We're going to do two-minute closings, and although I had set something up, since there are only four of you, who would like to start first with your two-minute closing? We'll do it that way, your choice. And if you don't choose, I will choose for you.
Okay, let me start.
This is your two-minute closing.
Okay, I'll use my two minutes to rebut and then.
Whatever you want to say, and then it's the next person.
So all the committee meeting minutes are also on the portal, policy, curriculum, facilities, all of them. All the meeting minutes are online. So transparency is something that's, that's been taken seriously for the past few years, and everything is up for the public to see. And the other thing is about town hall, yes, most of the major decisions that's been made, it's, the district has been considered that way, and it has taken it as a responsibility to put everything in front of the parents first. So as I mentioned, in this very, very same hall, very same auditorium, the courtesy busing service was presented to the public, and then they had an opportunity to interact, it was an interactive session. They had an opportunity to question and get their answers. So now to my closing statement. So actually, I wrote it down, hoping to keep, stick to time. So I would like to take this opportunity to present our performance in the past three years. We promised commitment, honesty, and transparency when we ran in 2020. And we continue to be honest and committed to the best interests of South Brunswick. Those of you who watch board meetings regularly and the retreat, you must have noticed our commitment to transparency and the incremental changes to policy and processes to improve transparency. This time, we bring experience of the past three years to the table, which I believe will be of great value to South Brunswick as we get into the very challenging phase of extended budget cuts. And, and we have been part of a board that ushered in free, full-day preschool that not only helps our families, but in the long run, will also attract younger families to the district and boost our enrollment. And we have also been part of the board that went in for the cost-saving optimization like that of healthcare center and transportation triples. So I promise to work with the newly-formed advocacy committee and take it all the way to Trenton. And I would like to affirm our commitment to prioritize academics, safety, mental health, and extracurriculars in the face of the budgetary challenges. And we do not accept campaign contributions.
You got to stop.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We do have three more closing statements, and I then will read one opening statement that we have gotten on the email. So Magesh, do you want to go next?
My main focus in this election is change. From the current board, which is not transparent, to one that focuses on excellence of the students and the school district. As I mentioned before, our rankings have come down, and we needed to bring it back to where it was five years back. And even taking their point that it is maintaining at the same level, why not we improve? And even taking their point that it is maintaining at the same level, why not we improve? Our West Windsor School District's in the top 15. We are also equally smart, equally good. Why can't we improve to a top 50 or top 20 or top 25? As a child, we encourage our child to study well and improve. As a school district, why can't we improve from the current levels? Transparency. Bringing total transparency of all policy decisions, especially the major projects that cost like $15 million over five years. The parents and taxpayers should be made aware of this much before the projects are implemented. I went around the township for campaigning and almost 80% of the residents are not aware of this project. And the major question was, why is school, instead of focusing on education, is focusing on a wellness center? That is a question I frequently hear from them. Empowerment. Empowerment of the parents, teachers and everyone of the community. So they are aware of what is happening in the school and can get information through the simple process of doing an Oprah, requesting information from the school. In fact, I tried that recently, I put some 25 items for Oprah. Unfortunately, nine were denied, I got only for six. That shows, reflects a lot on the transparency. On very flimsy grounds that the question is not clear. They could have sent back an email saying that, can you explain that question? And for that, they charged me $75. Money is not important, but still I would have appreciated if I got all those 25 answers. And our school enrollment is coming down. Do an analysis, why the enrollment is coming down? Why are the kids moving out? Some kids are moving to private school. Do an analysis and find out what is missing. Last, but not the least, ensuring student safety and well-being is our highest priority. And I will work towards it unlike the current board, sorry.
Thank you. Mike, closing statement, please.
Yes, I'm very happy to be here tonight and I appreciate all of you. And I just want you to know that we will continue to work as we have to improve because if you're number one in the state, you can still improve somewhere. If you're number one in the country, you can still, there's still some weakness somewhere. Because you gotta stay number one, right? So we're not number one, however, we're working towards that. And just know that you have a, a board and you have an administration, you have staff, teachers and all, who really do care about our kids. And, and we really put that at the top of the list. You know, this is why we have back-to-school nights, to let our parents know what's going on in our schools and what their child is going through on a daily basis, pretty much. They can experience what their child's going through. So, you know, transparency, all that stuff is, is, is right in there with that. You know, everything, all the resources are online nowadays. You know, when I was going to school, they didn't have all that. But you have those resources that have been talked about tonight are online for anyone to, to get a hold to. And if you have a question, if you feel like you can't find it, then that's what we have our offices for. We have the steps to take, people you go through, I can't remember the name, but it's there for us, it's there for us. Just know that, that we're here and we wanna, you know, continue, we want consistency, we need consistency. At this point, we only have one board member that was on since the first time I ran, five years ago. So we need consistency, we need to continue to open up the avenues to transparency because that's important to our community and especially to our parents. So, that's all I'm gonna say on that. I, just looking forward to the possibility of another term.
Thank you. And Bill L.
So first, I wanna begin with a few thank yous. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for, for hosting the forum tonight, to the other candidates that, that came out to participate, and of course, to everybody that came out both in person and some of those online, you know, to listen to the issues as we were discussing them. So my parents came here a few decades ago, they're actually here in the crowd with us tonight, and they came here because they wanted to make sure that, you know, myself and my sister got the best gift that a parent can give their child, and that's in education. And what I wanna make sure over, you know, this three-year term is that this school district, which has personally given me so much, is able to give that same gift over and over and over again to every single student that goes through these doors. Now, let's be frank, there are a variety of issues that we're facing, like we talked about earlier. There's that $13 million budget hole that we're potentially facing. We have to figure out, where do we wanna cut some money? Where do we wanna address some other issues? We're also facing issues of integrity, right? We're facing issues of whether or not board members are being transparent. It's one thing to say that the resources are available, it's another thing to actually make sure that parents are heard, or at least they, they understand that we understand their issues. I wanna spend the next three years addressing that, whether it's, you know, staying, you know, well before meetings, well after meetings, to, to talk to, to parents when they're addressing their issues, whether it's making sure that we're forming ad hoc committees, specific committees to, you know, field public input, whether it's making sure that we're going through with the administrators in the state, with the assemblymen that are deciding the budget on, you know, dollars-wise, how we're being impacted. I think it's important to do all of those things. Now, as a final point, what we've discussed tonight is just a flashpoint. You know, it's the issues that are important to us in October, November 2023, but the responsibility of the, of the board is to be forward-looking, right? It's to understand what's gonna be happening, you know, in 2024, 25, 26. So I can promise you is this, if there's an issue that you disagree with me about, if there's an issue where you want me to be educated on or you want your POV, I'm telling you right now that I will always strive to be an open member of the Board of Education, that I'll hear all concerns and at the end of the day, I will try once again to make sure that you are able to give the gift, give the gift to your child that my parents are able to give to me. Again, thank you for all for coming out and I hope to talk to you after this debate.
Thank you. And before you, wait, we've got one, 45 seconds worth of an opening statement. I don't think, I, I hope it's 45 seconds worth, you can time me, but I can't speak as, as fast as Smitha, but I'm gonna, this is, good evening, everybody. My name is Rajah Krishna and I have been part of the South Brunswick community for the past 20 years. Both my kids have gone through the South Brunswick School District. It was a great experience for them and as for the, and as for, and also for the complete family. This prompted me to do something and give back to the community. I have served in the Army for more than 14 years and it takes discipline, commitment and transparency to run an organization successfully. It also trained me to understand when the going gets tough, the tough get going. Presently, I am the Vice President of a Supply Chain Management Company... Uh-oh, come back. Oh dear. Oh no. It's your, it's your machine, what happened? Come back. Raj, wait, 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 I got it, I got it, I got it, thank you. Don't, don't time me anymore. I'm also, wait a minute, I, I run an organization, going to, I'm the Vice President of a Supply Chain Management Company that works globally to bring in products into America. I am running for reelection of the Board of Education with the sole intention of continuing my volunteer work, dedicating my time and effort towards student dedication, student education in our community. I appreciate your help and support. I hope you all have a good evening here today. Well, he's homesick, I'm sorry about that, but, and if you promise not to leave after we applaud, I have about a minute's worth of announcements that I really need to, you to hear. But I think before we do anything, they deserve it. So, thank you. In closing, I need to thank the candidates for wanting to serve your community and thank you to the residents for your thoughtful questions and for your coming out tonight and for those of you who are tuning in. And this hopefully will make you, help you make the best choices for your community. Elections and voting are core concerns for the League of Women Voters and I hope tonight's forum has helped you, the voters, make your own decisions and participate in the electoral process. And before you head home or turn us off on whatever you're watching, a few quick reminders about voting in this year's general election. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th, with in-person voting from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in your regular polling place. To vote, you must be registered by October 17th, that's creeping up very soon. And if you vote by mail, you should have your ballot all ready and you can mail it in, postmark by November 7th, or return it to any drop box in your county up to the close of the polls on Election Day. If you would like to vote by mail in this election but are not on the permanent list, you can still apply by mail by October 31st or in-person by 3:00 p.m. on November 6th at the county election office. You can also take advantage of early in-person voting on the voting machines at any early voting site in the county. And that's from Saturday, the 28th of October to Sunday, the 11th of November. Choose a time that works for you, from 10:00 to 6:00 on Sundays and 10:00 to 8:00 every other day. And finally, oh, thank you to Maria, you had a lot of, lot of up and down and you did a great job, kept them, thank you. So I invite you, women and men, to check out the work we do by going to the League of Women Voters, New Jersey on LWVNJ.org. We work to safeguard and defend our democracy and we invite you to join us in this critical work. And I leave you with the most important message, vote and stay safe, drive carefully, good night. [applause] You did a great job. You're losing better now?
You did a great job.
It's over. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for everything.